The board is now in work session to hear a report from the North Visioning Board Subcommittee and to discuss the North Eugene High School site. Welcome, everybody. Board members present with me here tonight are Alicia Hayes, Gordon Laffer, Judy Newman, Michelle Shu, and myself, Meyer Wamasah. Also with us is Superintendent Di. So we can go ahead and jump in. Is there... Did we indicate an order with which we would start this conversation?
We did not.
Okay. Do you have a preference, Michelle? Okay. In that case, unless anybody objects, and please speak up, we can maybe start with a report from the two committee meetings that happened over the last month. The first one occurred in February, and the last one was on Friday. Am I correct in those dates? Okay. So Superintendent Di and Michelle, if you want to jump in at any time, that would be great. I'm just going to start with a few of the main overviews from what came out of those meetings. To begin with, the first meeting included only Superintendent Michelle and myself, Chief of Staff Rob Hess, and staff members and admin. And we determined that we really noticed that we were missing two of the stakeholders who were supposed to be present at our committee meetings. And so we scheduled for two weeks later. And that meeting included students from Kelly and a parent from YG. Unfortunately, we didn't have more of the stakeholders than we were hoping. So part of our conversation when we finish sharing with you about the meetings is, what do we want more of if we want more of anything before we move into our next step? We had worked towards creating a few shared values so that we knew things that had to be part of our decision-making process. The three that seem to stand out the most are... The first one is that whatever is decided needs to make both of these schools whole again. The second is that whatever decision is made supports YG remaining a valued member of the North Region community. And the third was brought to us by a student. And it was summarized as if anyone loses, everyone loses. So that is the basis of our shared values. If anybody remembers any of them overlooking, please, please speak up. The other major components that I want to share with you is that, not surprisingly, there was feedback that we received that offered us some complementary visions. And then there was feedback that we received that offered some visions that are at odds with one another. Obviously, the complementary visions are easier to incorporate than the visions that are at odds, but both are equally valuable. I can come back in a minute and give some examples of those. Both groups also share with us some tangible needs as opposed to visions. So from questions about the number of bathrooms and water fountains to the number of classrooms that each school will need and the like. And again, at the end, I'd like to talk a little bit more about the question of creating another meeting in space for not only the stakeholders who we don't hear from, meaning the YG students and more parents, Kelly parents to begin with, and then more YG parents from other ones who came. So we need to discuss that and include that in the context of our timeline as well. So do you have any questions before I share more? I know that there were materials available to you all in our packet. So I know you have looked at those and have gotten some ideas of the conversations that took place there. I have to go back and forth. I can't see you and Judy and Alicia on the same screen. Okay. So in terms of the complementary vision, this one's kind of tricky because it's also somewhat at odds. But the complementary vision that seemed the most pressing is that, if co-locations to continue long-term, that there is a desire for a separation of spaces. Right now, one of the biggest programmatic difficulties is moving in between the two spaces that are designated for the two different schools. So the logistics of creating a physical space at 850 Howard that can accommodate these two school communities, but also accommodate them with a separation of spaces was articulated by the staff as well as strongly articulated by the students. Another one which is a little more abstract was really wanting to approach this as in a way where the two schools didn't feel like they were pitted against each other, that it was a competition and a race for resources and space. Do you want to add anything, Michelle, to the complementary visions?
No, I think you're...
The only other one that immediately comes to mind also, and I think this is probably something shared by the entirety of 4J, seeing as we live in the state of Oregon, is a desire for some outdoor covered area. So that one seemed to be coming from both school communities. Pardonize anything that you're wanting to make sure we mention?
No, no, excuse me. No, not necessarily. I think your comment does yield. Thank you.
So then there's the visions that are at odds. And then the number-one vision that is probably at odds is a desire for certain spaces. There's... Both schools would like to have access to certain parts of the building. And they can't both have access to the same parts of the building if we're also going to have a separation of spaces. So right now, YG is positioned in an L shape. And part of the space that YG is taking up, Kelly would very much like to recoup in their school space. The other one that jumped out a couple of times from both communities is whether we use resources to create two separate cafeterias. One school community very much wants two separate cafeterias, and the other school would prefer to use resources in other ways. So really, what comes down over and over and over again in these conversations is the question of space and how space is distributed with the current space available, but also how the needs that they identify can be both filled with imagined spaces that we will be coming up with collectively with them. We have now understood that we have probably about twice as much money as we thought we did last year. We also know that money's not going as far either. So the longer we wait, the less impact the money has. We have approximately $10 million, $10 to $12 million, although two of those will be used for taking care of some immediate needs. And so that leaves really $10 million. We are very much committed to not creating spaces that are impermanent. And I think that's well-received by the schools. I don't think they want to continue solving their problems with more portals. So I'll stop again to see if anybody has questions. Gordon?
I know this is written to me before. I just wonder, I don't know if you have the numbers with you now for Superintendent, about the $10 to $12 million figure in terms of what the total number is. I know we talked about, could we look at other pots of money that hadn't originally been designated for Kelly-YG that could we add to this? So I don't know if you could just explain what the different pots of money that we looked at and how we got to that number as being the limit of the money that's available?
Sure. Various revenue streams. We looked at, number one was savings from bond projects where we came to half or under project, interest gained on bond premium, and bond premium beyond what we thought we would receive, pulling some money out of reserve accounts that we have in our beginning year fund balance and our capital improvements budgets, which are designed not from the bond itself, but for sale of property and money that we have accumulated over the course of time and put aside for deferred maintenance. If there is more money that could be identified, it just means that we would not be doing other projects with those funds that are on the deferred maintenance list, examples of which are roofs for schools, replacement of school buses, general work that we have across all the states.
Yeah, I feel like this is too big a question probably to ask or expect the answer from this kind of thing. But, you know, I know that not... This is, you know, when we think about, what are we going to do here? Because we could do something now, we could wait till the next bond, which means waiting a long time, I think, seven, eight years or something like that. And so I guess I'm wondering, is there... Are there any of the deferred maintenance projects that we could say, okay, we'll do something in between and have those wait till the next bond and find some more money to increase the $10 to $12 number? And I know you all spent a lot of time looking at this. I'm just trying to, like, if we're all going to go ahead and say, this is the number, then I want to make sure we exhaust the other options without, you know, obviously, without doing something stupid or making it too...
Sure. At this point, I would say that in speaking with finance department, taking a look at our budgets, talking with facilities, I believe that the amount that we've identified is sufficient to do some necessary permanent construction and is appropriate and responsible given what we know and don't know about what's coming down the pipeline with other bond projects that we have and current cost escalations. I think that this is a reasonable first step towards a long-range solution that gets... gives us the potential to address the concerns that those in the building see on a day-to-day basis. Maybe not holistically or exhaustively, but certainly allows us to move in the direction that we very much need to move for the students and staff in those two programs.
Judy, I see your hand, but I'm just going to add a quick thing that both of you reminded me. Another one of the shared visions that we agreed upon is that there is not a solution that can be immediate, that is the only solution, that we're looking at short-term, mid-range solutions and long-term action as well. So understanding that there could be phases to this is something that we all agreed upon. And I think that Superintendent, I was just speaking to that with what you're saying. Judy?
So I went back to the packet because I'm, you know, not having been at the meetings, there's a lot of information. I really appreciate it. I didn't see the notes. I saw the handout about the cost, but I didn't see notes. Did I... I just went back and looked again at the packet. So did I miss those? I could have.
You might have maybe... It was in the Friday memo?
Well, there was a two-page... There was a two-sided memo just about costs if the building remains. That's all I've seen. I haven't seen notes.
About North Eugene?
Yeah.
Kelly?
So I wouldn't mind seeing them if there are minutes. It doesn't have to be right now, but it would just... Because I'm tracking, taking notes as best I can about the vision stuff, et cetera, but...
No problem. Do you think, Jenna, that you might be able to email those to the board?
We don't have minutes. We need to refer them, but we have summary notes.
Yes.
They are available in hearings, but I have not a lot that I can be sure of.
Okay. So just to repeat what Jenna said, because she's out in the audience and I didn't make her come up to the table because she wants to do that. We have summary notes, not minutes. We also... And I thought I saw them linked, but we can make sure that they get shared with the rest of the board. And both of... And the meetings were recorded, is that correct? So both of the meetings were also recorded, Judy, so they can be viewed in action as well?
So they're posted on the website I can go to?
I believe so. I'm looking at Jenna.
There's more information in the Friday memo.
Oh, go ahead, Michelle.
Under administrative items, there's details from the meetings and there's feedback. There are also links for proposed options, proposed alternatives, and a spreadsheet so you can look for additional information there.
In the Friday memo, Michelle, is that what you said?
From Jenna.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. I thought I could see them. And I believe it includes the student survey results as well? Is that right? Okay. Alicia?
Thanks. I was going to make a comment about the Friday memo. So... And also just, it would be really great if that was connected to board books in our packet so that people, not everybody gets the Friday memo. And with that, it sounds like you guys had some great meetings. I just wonder if we're planning, and I know we've gotten requests from the River Road community neighborhood, the neighborhood organization, about doing an update for them. And I think that's really important as we keep our community, even if they don't have kids in school, abreast of that. And of course, I would want them to know that they can come to those meetings because the two of you are on that. That is a subcommittee of the board, so it is a public meeting. So they would be welcome and would have their voice heard at that time, just as anybody in those meetings would. And so... But I also think it's really important that we reach out, whether we have staff go there and talk about it or how we present. I would hope that we, as a board, could have that discussion and get that information out and get out the information about how we're grappling with this decision to that group as well. Thanks.
Yeah, Alicia, that's what I was hoping we would close with. But we can jump into it now. It's deciding what more... And their request was more focused on the North building itself. But both stand true. We've had parents who are not on the committee ask to be included. So the question would remain, what kind of event we would want to hold? Whether it would be a listening session or inviting them to the meetings? So I appreciate both of those suggestions. I'd love to hear your input as a board. Michelle and I can make the decision, but it doesn't feel appropriate for us to make a big decision like that, just the two of us. I'm looking at you, Alicia. Sorry, I probably should say out loud. Please.
No, I appreciate that. Well, first, I might... And maybe you've done this, so apologize if you have. Reach out to them and ask what would be of interest to them. You know, sometimes it's as simple as, maybe it's not simple, as an update because I have found not everybody watches our meetings and just what the process is, you know, that we are holding these meetings and maybe something like that. And then, and then, then, I appreciate your bigger question, which is if we make some decisions, we have a short timeline. And as you know, we've talked about how hard it is to schedule this board. So, you know, what is possible? And so we make that timeline for the decision so we don't pay the city that extra money that we'll probably never get back. So I would ask them if a... I don't know if you were looking at a community meeting. That makes me a little nervous about timelines. I think it's important, but the timeline makes me nervous. But definitely with the River Road community, you know, the group that we connect with them and ask them what they're looking for or what might be best for them. Does that make sense, Maya?
It does. And I thought in his email that you were referring to, he had pretty much outlined it might be a separate email, but they are requesting a community forum take place.
Okay.
And they...
If we can...
To be within the neighborhood boundaries of North Eugene High School, which makes perfect sense.
Yeah. And maybe they'll host it and some of us will show up who could be there because my fear is we have a deadline. And if you walk back from that deadline, I'm not sure, you know, we're going to be able to make that. But if we have to say, go forth and do it, I would say, go forth and do it. Thanks.
I appreciate your input. I hope that everybody else offers their share as well. So I'm looking at you, Gordon, and Michelle and Judy.
Yeah. I'm going to say, I think that's a great idea. And I know this neighborhood association is pretty active and very engaged in their neighborhood, the community. So I think asking them to host it, if they are up for it, is a great idea because they have connections we might not.
Okay, so then my follow-up then, while you guys are offering that, is... I know we can't make formal decisions in a work session, but would folks be okay then if it were something that only some board members attended and not all board members?
That was my follow-up question. If they host it, we all could go, or do we have to notice it? I mean, I would like to go, and I think probably all of us would like to go. So I don't know. Maybe we could get some guidance on that.
Okay. Michelle?
Yeah, it would be valuable for me to attend. I don't... I don't know. As Judy alluded to, how many of us could attend? I think a lot of work has already been invested and those compiled pieces of feedback need to be shared so that everyone's on the same page and we're not making people repeat themselves. I'm not entirely sure what has changed in the last three years of co-location. But I think we're fairly updated now, and that information needs to be shared with the community. A lot of... A lot of the parents also attended these neighborhood schools. That needs to be taken into consideration as well.
I'm just going to jump in and say that I did look back, and the invitation or the request is coming from not only the River Road Community Organization, but the Santa Clara Community Center as well. And it is specifically about the future of the Old North Building. So the timeline for that, I believe we need to make a decision by ideally April 19th, our April 19th meeting, so that we don't face the $700,000 charge without the intention of being willing to jump into that $700,000 charge. We don't want to accidentally or by virtue of naveling the deadline end up having to pay that. So I will... Alicia, you're having your hand raised again?
Yeah. No, I appreciate you just laid out a little more clarity on that. And so to me, when I think community forum is that feedback. I think there can be room for feedback, but I think, as Michelle said, we've got a lot of information and we have to get it out into our community. And so I would say that you... I would be fine with you, you, your, you and Michelle, whoever reaching out, finding out when they can do it, and then scheduling it for, like, they may have monthly meetings and we can just go to one of their meetings. And then my request would be that we be able to Zoom in if you're board members that don't feel comfortable being in public but want to attend, or some people may be traveling, depending on if it's during spring break or whatever. Does that make... Does that work for you? Is that kind of where you're headed, Maya?
Yeah, that's great feedback. I don't know what their, you know, technology capability is in that old house.
You don't...
You know, it's that space on River Road that we're maybe... So ideally, the Zooming option would be great, but I'm... Maybe we'll consult with our tech...
It may be a little low-tech, such as I get to watch it and that's it. I get it. Let's see how their Wi-Fi is. But yeah, that would be great. It's just that, you know, we've committed to hybrid, and so I don't want to trip up on that. And it'd be fine because really, we're listening. We aren't presenting. So thanks.
And maybe it means somebody, whether it's Judy or the staff member, comes and holds up their phone and Zooms it and records it at the same time. We'll figure it out. Or an iPad or something. We'll figure that part out. But this is presuming that they accept our request that they host. And this is, again, we're kind of jumping ahead into the North conversation. So maybe I'll just piggyback on the topic of a similar but focused additional meeting where we are able to hear from families. If I want to hear people's feedback on that. I know we've received quite a few emails where people are eager to give feedback. And one of the next steps that, well, the next step that we would have to do apart from feedback would be to direct the superintendent to have his people work with the staff to come up with some tangible proposals to consider. So the big question would be, do we invite the community to that? Or do we invite the community to give input similar to what we've received prior to that? And I can't really say why the meeting didn't include more parents. I'm not sure. It might have been miscommunication. It might have been there weren't parents able to attend. Michelle?
I'm curious. I'm curious what the turnaround time is to come up with some solutions.
I don't know the exact number of days, but we could take the information that we have been given in part communication with their respective staff, with their students. I think that's changed a bit over time as we've had more conversation, but it's pretty durable. And we can fairly accurately, at least at this point in the process, place a price tag on what it would be if we were to build a classroom, add a bathroom, put it in a wall, whatever it is that they would like. I don't believe that that would take too terribly long. Not a matter of weeks. I think in order to get construction of costs close enough that it would be useful information for a productive conversation.
So they would be offered more than one option? And then after that's presented, just discussion and see what changes or what can be prioritized?
Yeah. And once folks begin to see how things might fit together, where the construction is, it might generate a few other ideas, but we could have some idea about the costs associated with add-ons to the idea before we get to a contract and we have a work change.
A follow-up question? A follow-up question to the timing is, um, do you feel as though that should take place after we've made our North Eugene decision? Um, or do those things feel like they can take place simultaneously?
Unfortunately, if, um, we are going to take possession of the building when it's complete and begin to move furniture down, which we'll receive in a matter of weeks, and truly take possession of and prepare for the move into the building, the latest we can make on a decision regarding the existing North Eugene High School building is April 19th.
And would we, um, wait till we make that decision to start coming up with schemes for the YG Kelly situation?
No, that work could be done concurrently.
Okay.
I can say that because Kyle's not here. But we've talked about this and there, there can be two, two rails on, on which we're working. Not a problem.
Um, I, I will also share, um, with the rest of the board, the, there's some additional documents that came from YG where they list some very, um, tangible desires and their needs. But there, some of them are very large and some of them are things like reconsider the location of where the trash is. It's right outside of one of the classrooms and it doesn't smell very good in that classroom, especially when it's warm outside. So some of the things are much smaller, some of the things are much larger. So I will, I will forward those to the board as well. They just came to me early this week. Are there more Kelly-YG questions for, oh Judy?
Well, I, I'm really struggling here because I, I really need, I think we need to talk with the community, get feedback. I understand the timeline and also what I'm hearing unless, that we really have 10 to 12 million dollars to spend that you have looked at. I mean, I know Gordon asked if there's any, anything in the deferred maintenance. I mean, I guess in some ways to move this conversation, if those are the facts. I mean, let's say you really look under every stone, there's deferred maintenance that we can't defer. What, what is that bottom line amount? That's going to dictate some of our options. And then getting real input from the community around that saying this is, this is what we have because, you know, obviously I think we'd all like to build all these new schools and maybe that's really in the queue for our next bond. And I think it was mentioned that's seven years out. So I, I don't know. I might be missing something unless there's some money I don't know about. I don't know. So I, I don't want to keep asking open-ended. Maybe we could move the conversation with some parameters of the knowns that we have.
Yeah, that's how I understood Dr. Dye's, um, suggesting that we come up with several possibilities so that then those possibilities can perhaps generate ideas, but at least they give a tangible idea, which is partly why we had, um, generated a, it wasn't a proposal, what was the word I'm looking for? We had generated a model of the building with some additional buildings attached. Not because they were necessarily the answer that we had in place, but to demonstrate to the two school communities that there are answers that are not in the form of portables or, um, relocating the, you know, for a while, the conversation had been about relocating YG to Willard, for example, um, that received a pretty, um, confirmed no thank you from the YG community. So I, I agree Judy that coming forward and we have been pretty clear about the boundaries around finances. And, um, and now the question is to show exactly what can happen with that. It's hard to imagine until we have some examples for them to work through. I saw you come and speak.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to reiterate that at least at this point in time, um, I firmly believe that that $12 million I, uh, limit is responsible and reasonable. And it would, it would make me uncomfortable if at this point in time we tried to do more. I, I believe that we might even be possible to do something more prior to the next bond, but at this point in time, I believe that's the number that we should be, really focusing on for what is possible for construction and the purchase of furniture, fixtures and technology at 8:50 hour.
So it sounds like we're all in agreement that we need to come forward with some pretty substantial ideas to share and that could be the next step. Judy, is that what you were saying?
Yeah. And, and I just wanted to ask, as we look at those options, because you know, as parents have been writing things and sending things, you know, that, they seem to have pretty good data about, they have good data, you know, if, if there's not enough library space or if Kelly's options are limited because of space, you know, going forward, I don't, I'd like to see those things addressed for sure. I'm sure that's what the community said. But how we can really, you know, be proactively looking at those. And I'm hoping that with the amount of money we have, that's real, that we can.
Yeah. And, and I think that's at the root of the shared value of wanting both schools to be whole at the end of the decision-making process. I know, uh, Kelly in particular has had to sacrifice big chunks of their programming that was compromised by space. Um, so definitely keeping, keeping those things in mind. And, and it's not exclusively Kelly. I shouldn't say there's parts of YG that had to shift in this shared space situation, but you're absolutely right, Judy.
And for what it's worth, we are in a process right now doing a comparison of what is available in the way of facility space and elective programs at Kelly. Comparing that to all other middle schools in the district. I think that that factual information can be helpful. Um, I know that other middle schools do have culinary school or culinary programs, but not all of them. I think Kelly was one of the programs, middle school programs that did have a weight room and that that's not at all the other middle schools. I think actual factual information will be helpful in making, um, decisions about what the best way is to proceed. Because I know how difficult it is when you begin to hear other schools have these things and you haven't been able to verify, you rely on the information that's given. And so we want to make certain that people are not, um, making assumptions about what others have and what others don't have in the way of space and program.
Alicia?
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Dye. Appreciate that. When we look at what other middle schools have. Also really want to honor that that's a loss for Kelly. Whether they, they're the only ones with a weight room or not. I saw that weight room. It was pretty sweet. And, um, and it's a loss. And, um, and, and I'm happy that we've got a new north, that we have students that will thrive there because of the opportunities and that, you know, there are sacrifices that are being made and I appreciate that we're listening and we're going to try to do the best we can to, I don't think we can negate the sacrifices, but we can make, we can do a good job with it. And I appreciate that, um, that we're listening. I just want to reiterate, we got to make that decision because, you know, while I love the city of Eugene, I don't want to give them seven teachers. So, or the equivalent of, so that's, that's going to push us as a board and, um, and we can't make everybody happy, but we have to make a pretty tough decision coming up. So I want to make sure we get that on our calendar. On a day that I'm not going to be there. No, on a day that, that gives us the time that we aren't going to end up paying the city. Thanks.
So to follow up that point, I appreciate that Alicia, we're halfway through our work session. Uh, unless there are other questions around the YG Kelly situation. I'm going to summarize just the next step being, um, I, I suppose in our meeting to put an item for action to directly, I need to begin creating proposals to bring to the school communities. And then, uh, we will do that in the context of a broader community meeting versus, versus limiting it exclusively to the committee. But we'll, we'll figure out the best form for that to take. If there's no other questions.
In preparation for moving forward, it would just be helpful for me so that I can effectively direct staff. At what point does this go from a matter of concern for the subcommittee and thus the board's whole? And at what point are we working independent of the subcommittee so that we can bring back to the board proposals and recommendations for approval? We just don't want to get in your lane or fail to get in ours if, if it is, if that's in fact the case.
Who has any input there? I don't want to just jump in myself. You know, somebody else.
I, I think we really need to work together to find solutions for this. So I, I'm not entirely sure.
If, if the entire process, as an example, like the last few meetings were, um, were a function of the subcommittee, um, then, then staff would not necessarily take the initiative to plan or facilitate or move at a faster pace than what the subcommittee did.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate it working, um, in parallel. One of the earlier meetings, um, there was a floor plan that was presented. And given the additional feedback, like as you had said before, they could come up with other alternatives now. I don't feel like there would be any stepping into length. Because they're, we're doing different things.
So, um, district staff would take the lead in the work of creating several options based on the feedback that we've received, which has become pretty extensive and, and up to date. We're no longer relying on stuff that's several years old. And then the function of the committee would be to bring it to that committee space. With the invitation to the community to attend that committee space. Michelle?
I, I feel like their expertise would inform decisions that we need to make. And then the students have their expertise, the staff have their expertise, community has their input. But their, the, um, facilities expertise is needed sooner rather than later.
Judy?
And I would definitely, I mean, just to, I think echo what you were saying, Michelle. On the board, you might, you actually probably have some professional skills to understand this, but most of us don't. I mean, I think it'd be really worthwhile to have, some of the, you know, whoever you think, if it's Kyle or Ryan, whoever's involved at the meeting, because I know there's in the past, sometimes there's frustration when, you know, we get asked a question and really that's their expertise. And I think the more prepared we are with at least being able to respond to people's questions, the better a forum like that would go.
Do you feel?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So if there's no more Kelly-YG comments or questions, I think we need to move into a discussion or a place where we can ask further questions about the North Building. We will definitely be making a decision on this at the April 19th meeting. Unless, yeah, the April 19th meeting. And so this is our chance to ask for clarifications, make sure we really understand the, um, the, the choice that we have in front of us and what the, what the ramifications are deciding in either direction. Both have pros, both have cons, and it's up to us to, you know, work through and come to a place where we feel, um, ready to make our decision. And if nobody has any other questions after the information that was shared in our packet, then that's fine also. But this is really the time for us to hammer out your questions. Alicia?
Thanks, Maya. And I'm going through that really quickly and I wasn't sure because there was a lot on the, the money piece. But I, I think we talked about this last time. I just want to reiterate the, the green space at North as it relates to the green space at Churchill, Sheldon and South. If we left the building, there's always a need for buildings. I think absolutely. But, but what does that mean for the students at North compared to their counterparts? So that's one question. I think we had answered, but, or somebody was looking into it. For exacts, that would be something I'd want to know. Thanks.
I believe the acreage was included in, you know, the packet or the Friday remodel, um, the packet?
I can review that, you know?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and just review it and have it in front of us?
Sure. Prior to the construction of the new building, North Eugene High School had 11.76 acres of green space. After building the new North, 5.59 acres remain. The other high schools have, uh, 10.26 acres in Sheldon with the BV fields, 8.34 acres in South. And Churchill, um, seems to be an outlier, outlier of 19.91 acres, but about nine acres of that is a wetland that really can't be used for any of the athletic and sports seasons. And so, um, roughly speaking, North right now with the building remaining in place has a little bit more than half of what the other schools have and a little, right at 50% of what they had prior to the construction of the new building.
Judy?
So, um, if we're wanting to, I think your question was, is there anything sort of missing from this that we'd want to get information about? And I know, um, I think I asked, I think we talked a little bit and we've gotten emails about this, about part of North has been remodeled and new. And I just think we're going to maybe get some of those questions and I, and I'm just wondering if there is another box. I'm not saying it's the option to take, but that we really looked at that and that the cost for that would be $38 million or it's, it gets more expensive because you demolish half and keep half. But I think if we're talking about the options we looked at, given the input we've gotten and things I've learned about, it's probably worth adding that to the grid.
If I recall correctly, um, at one of our board meetings, Kyle did speak to the, um, ability to take the building apart in pieces and load up some of it. And to correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent Dye, but the construction of the building does not, um, make for, uh, partial demolition and partial preservation.
No, I do remember having the conversation. If we're talking about going to the community though, you know, some of the questions came up from the community. I think putting that down as something that was talked about and considered and maybe why it's not viable. Or maybe, you know, should be included is my point. I'm sorry, Kyle.
I understand you better now, Judy. Thank you.
But that did mean we got to see Kyle's face. So, and he's, he's happy to be here.
It's always a good day when Kyle's here. Are there any other questions or thoughts that folks want to share about this upcoming decision?
Maya?
Yes, Alicia?
So, um, I appreciate, tried to, I tried to read and go back and find those things. And it was really great to hear just how succinct it was on space. And I'm wondering if there's other things that, as you read through that, as board members, we think would make a compelling or it needs to be presented to the community. I don't know if we're making a compelling argument because I don't know where everybody stands. But, um, but if, you know, when we look at that, I guess I would say I would be curious if there's other things that I would want to make sure like Judy just did, that we share with our community. I, I want to show the, the I want to show the spacing. That's important to me to make sure that there's, you know, that every high school student has the green space that other schools have and there's some, you know, I don't know if I use the word equity, but whatever, consistency. So anyway, just a thought, if there's other things, I'd be curious what people think community might be interested in, or we should definitely make sure Kyle presents or whoever presents. Just a thought.
You know, I think that's really a good idea to brainstorm some of those things, especially if we're going to be going to River Road and setting ourselves up to speak to the community about this. I think one of the things that we probably need to communicate is the viability of that space as a space that is claimed by the community and what that would mean for the district. My understanding is it would mean we'd have to sell the property as opposed to sponsoring a community center, something along those lines. So addressing that question, Alicia, seems like an important one to preempt instead of waiting for people to continue to imagine that space in that context. Michelle?
And there's also, you know, we did mention of having one of the schools move in there and then that would be another co-location situation shared with a community organization? I'm just not sure how that would function.
Anyone else have suggestions for things that we be sure to include in the community conversation? And honestly, I think that just brainstorming, these are also really helpful, Alicia, I do suggest it, because it helps us to wrap our own heads around this decision, to talk through the points that the community will need to hear, one way or the other. Well, I'll share that I find this decision to feel both simple and very complicated at the same time. Numbers tell a very significant story and so do, so does nostalgia and memories and, and honestly also dreams, you know, the idea of what if is a very compelling place to set. But I think ultimately at the end of the day, those things can all coexist, unfortunately.
Well, can I jump in?
Absolutely.
I just really appreciate the people that did come and share their opinions. It's, it's not easy. No, you said something and it like sparked a memory, which happens when you've been on the board for 16 years, very deep discussions we had many years ago about not co-locating an alternative school with a neighborhood school. Like, where do we, we, we as a board felt that was, you know, that there were issues that would come up. And so I, I was thinking through some of those, trying to remember what those issues were and how do you mitigate them if this happens? And how do you separate and all of that? So, so I appreciate we're in there, we're listening, we're trying to make the best of this situation. And so, thank you guys. And hopefully I'll get a chance to sit in on one of those meetings and be able to hear firsthand from, from the students and the parents. As we move forward, this is the best way to deal with this situation. So thanks and thanks to the staff for their time in making sure we hear the voices. Thanks.
Yeah, Alicia, that's a really good point. I think the very first board meeting I ever attended was around this exact issue. And for a while, the solution was that schools were closed and it's not our intention to have that be the same pathway for finding a solution for this situation. So I think that's really important because there were, there were a lot of schools that didn't make it through that conversation and the, and the seeing the difficulties and identifying really the inequities that took form in those spaces. So I'm hoping that we have a collection of people that will be creative and with a lot of listening, which we've done, we have a lot of, a lot of material to work with.
Thanks for that clarity, Maya. There was no way I would suggest it was closing. It was, so somebody might have misheard that. So thank you. Thanks for putting that out.
I'm saying that more for, to say out loud that I have the confidence that while we still recognize this as an issue, we're going to be able to find solutions in a different way than, than the past.
No, and I appreciate that because sometimes you're right. I mean, as I was sitting going, oh yeah, we did close that school or we made that commitment, but there were closures because of that commitment. So no, you're right. So thanks for standing firm that our answer is not to close one of these schools. Thanks.
Do we have more North questions for Superintendent Dye? We have him here. I'm just going to do a last look around at the screens to make sure I'm not overlooking anyone. All right, well, then in that case, the work session is now closed at 6:02 PM. We will see you all in just about an hour for the regular board meeting.